Evening, the Piscataway Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News. Notice, um, well, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Waller.
President.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Edgavaria?
Here.
And Madam Chair?
Here. Uh, Mr. Barlow, would you please read the open public meeting notice? Mr. Barlow?
You're on mute.
It helps if I unmute myself. In keeping with the guidelines that have been disseminated by the Department of Community Affairs, the Planning Board has tried its best to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act and the Governor's Guidelines in dealing with the, uh, virtual setting. The applicant matter that will be heard this evening had the login information for the Zoom platform put forth in their notice. Members of the public who wish to be heard will be afforded an opportunity as if we were in an actual physical space, and we've complied with same, Madam Chair.
The flag can be seen over my right shoulder. Can we all, uh, recite the Pledge of Allegion in unison, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we swear in the professionals.
Yes, can you please raise your right hand? Um, do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, are there any changes to, changes to tonight's agenda, Mr. Barlow?
Madam Chair, the only, uh, matter number 10 was a discussion item for redevelopment plan for 1700 South Washington Avenue that's been carried to the April 9th, 2025 meeting. That is the only change.
Okay, thank you. Um, item number seven, uh, can, can I have a motion to pay the duly audited bills?
Madam Chairman, this is Carol Saunders. I make a motion to pay the duly audited bills.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Edgavaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, item number eight. Adoption of resolutions.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the resolution 24 PB dash 0809 V for LRN Properties LLC, Bulk Variants and Minor Subdivision.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Edgavaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, item number nine, adoption of the minutes of the February 12th.
Madam Chair, I'd like to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of February 12th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Thank you, roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Alex isn't here, Mr. Edgavaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, item number 10 has been adjourned to April 9th. Item number 11, for discussion ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the township. Chapter 21.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is just to add a fee schedule to the existing ordinance. Um, as it stands today, one does not exist. Now we have a permit requirement, and with that permit requirement, we had to add these scheduled.
Okay, any discussion by the board? No objections, um, can we have a motion, please? To amend?
Madam Chair, don't Corcoran, I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll sound her second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Guys.
Yes.
Yes, please let the record show, Mr. Atkins is on, thank you. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Edgavaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, okay, item number 12.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, uh, I had prepared a resolution uh, indicating the board's concurrence with the ordinance amendment to be sent to the council. I believe Ms. Saunders has it.
Okay. Ms. Saunders?
Yes, okay, um, Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the ordinance to amend and supplement the revised journal ordinance for chapter 21 zoning, section 8A for flood damage prevention.
Can I get a second? Um, yeah, a second?
I second it.
Thank you, roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Edgavaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Very cool.
Okay, item number 12, 24 PB 21 Stag Industrial Holdings LLC. Appearing tonight is Mr. Michael Floyd.
Evening, Madam Chairwoman, uh, for the record, Michael Floyd with the firm of Archer and Greiner, appearing on behalf of the applicant Stag Industrial Holdings LLC, which has submitted an application for major site plan approval, bulk variance approval, design waivers for property located at 100 New England Avenue uh, and identified as block 4601 lot 2.01 on the township's official tax maps. Uh, this property is currently, uh, improved with an existing 101,846 square foot, uh, warehouse, light industrial building. The property is located in the LI5 Light Industrial Zoning District in which the existing use of the property is permitted and the proposed use of the property is permitted. Um, I would just add upfront that we are not proposing to increase the size of the building. We're not proposing to increase the footprint of the building or raise the roof. Uh, instead, this is a vacant building and Stag is proposing exterior improvements uh, to help market the building and get a high quality tenant uh, into the building as soon as possible. Uh, and those improvements, as you'll hear from our witnesses this evening, involve modifications to the loading docks, additional trailer storage, and reconfiguration of existing parking lot, um, areas. Uh, with me this evening, uh, we do have four witnesses. We have Rob Hawkins on behalf of Stag Industrial. We have Tom Bayshard Jr., a licensed professional engineer with Mohawk Land Development Consultants. Tom is the project engineer of record. We have, uh, Kim Decken, a registered architect in the state of New Jersey with TK Studio. And last but not least, we have Lance Landgraf Jr., a licensed professional planner with his AICP designation, uh, to put the proofs on the record with respect to the bulk variances and design waivers that are being requested this evening. Madam Chair, I don't know if you'd like to have all the witnesses sworn at once or as they get called up to present their testimony?
Um, we can swear them all at once, but we need to, you still need to, um, you still need to, um, qualify, those that need to be qualified.
Yes, understood and agree.
They have to state their name for the record.
Yep. R- Rob, are you available?
Yes.
Michael, practically speaking, why don't we do them one at a time as they're called? That way the, that way the minutes will be clearer, I think.
Okay.
Understood, and that, that's a good point. So, uh, I'd like to call first Rob Hawkins with Stag Industrial. Rob, are you available to testify?
I am, like, thank you.
Okay, can you please raise your right hand, Mr. Hawkins? Do you swear that the testimony about to give would be truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Robert Hawkins.
Thank you.
And seeing that this is Stag's first project in, uh, the township, I thought it was important for Rob to talk about Stag, its history with industrial development and the property in question. So, Rob, uh, just to start off, can you describe your position with Stag uh, and your experience with Stag and industrial development?
Sure, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chair and, uh, planning board members. Uh, my name is Rob Hawkins. I'm a vice president of asset management with Stag Industrial. Uh, Stag Industrial is a public real estate investment trust. We own 591 buildings across 41 states. Uh, we have a portfolio of roughly 116 million square feet.
And, uh, Rob, why did Stag purchase this property at Piscataway at 100 New England Avenue?
Sure, so we, uh, we target, um, what we're known as the top 60 markets, uh, as tracked by CBRE. Uh, the northern New Jersey market falls within that area, and that's where we invest.
And the, I stated upfront that this building is currently vacant. Who was the last tenant in the building?
The last tenant was Strato.
And why now are you proposing these site improvements to the, you know, the additional loading docks, trailer storage, and reconfiguration of the, the car parking?
Sure, so the building was set up specifically for the use that Strato had in the building. Uh, we're trying to provide, uh, you know, additional improvements to the building that we think will, uh, appeal to the broader market.
And based upon your experience with Stag and Stag's experience with its national portfolio and working with your broker, it's, it's your opinion that, uh, these proposed improvements will help to market this building to get a high quality tenant in there?
That's correct.
Thank you, Rob. Um, that's all the questions I had for Rob at this point. I don't know if there's any board members that have questions about Stag, its portfolio, how it operates, its buildings?
Any members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. of this, um, witness? Um, we do have to open it to the public, though. Uh, members of the public, you've heard this testimony of, uh, Mr. Hawkins. Does anyone in the public wish to ask any questions, this witness?
No, I'm Madam Chair.
Close to the public, you may call your next witness.
Thank you, I'd like to call Tom Bayshard Jr. Tom, are you available online and ready to testify?
I am.
Mr. Bayshard, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Thomas Bayshard Jr.
Thank you.
And Tom, before you begin, if you could just speak to your education, credentials, licenses, and experience testifying before boards in New Jersey?
Sure, I am president of Mohawk Land Development Consultants. I graduated from Villanova University in 1993 with a Bachelor of Civil Engineering. I have over 30, 30 years of experience in site civil land development engineering. I'm a registered professional engineer in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, and I have testified numerous times as an expert witness in New Jersey before planning boards, zoning boards, joint land use boards, and environmental commissions.
He's quali-, he's, he's qualified.
Thank you, and Tom will be, uh, sharing his screen this evening and referencing four exhibits. So, Tom, if we can start with exhibit A1, which is an aerial photograph of the property in question and the surrounding uses?
Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, before I start, I'd just like to say we did receive comments from all of the professionals. Um, and we will comply with all of the comments. As detailed in my response letter dated March 7th, uh, 2025. Uh, we, we would, uh, certainly agree to work with, with the professionals, uh, to address any, you know, remaining issues as a condition, you know, of any approval that the board might grant tonight.
Tom?
Yep. Okay, um, this first exhibit here, this is, uh, directly from the site plan set. Uh, this is an aerial exhibit, it's drawing C0010, uh, sheet three of 20. We use a company called Nearmap. Um, this picture was taken in February of last year. Um, the blue line represents the property line, it's about 8.14 acres. Uh, New England Avenue is a cul-de-sac. It terminates in the lower left corner of the site in this area here. Uh, Colonial Drive comes into, uh, New England Avenue at about the midpoint of the site in this area right here. Uh, Centennial is down off the bottom of the sheet down in this area here. Um, you can see the surrounding uses are all industrial in nature. The existing building is, as Mike said, 101,846 square feet. Um, there are, there is a large, uh, car parking lot on the southern portion of the site in this area here. There are smaller car parking lots on the southwest corner, the west side of the building, and on the north side of the building as well. There are currently three, um, full access driveways into the site, uh, one into this large parking area here, uh, one into the loading area. The loading area is in the lower, or the southeast corner of the building in this area here. Um, and there's a, a driveway on the northern portion of the site to access this parking in front of the, uh, the office appendage, which is this white rectangle in this area here. Um, there are no stormwater management facilities on site. There is a storm sewer infrastructure that connects into New England Avenue, uh, and the site has all public utility connections, uh, water, sewer, gas, electric, and telecommunications.
Thank you, Tom, if we can move to exhibit A2, which is the overall site plan that was submitted with the application?
Yes. Okay, again, this is, um, exhibit A2, this is directly from the site plan set. It's drawing C0100, sheet seven of 20. Uh, we've rotated the view slightly and zoomed in, um, so it fits nicer on the sheet. North is now pointing to the right and slightly up. Scale of this drawing is 1 inch equals 30 feet. Um, the building is the brown, uh, shaded area. Existing loading docks in the lower, uh, southeast corner of the, uh, building. We're proposing to eliminate all of the car parking in the southern portion of the site in this area here. Uh, we'll be adding six new loading docks to the, uh, southwest corner of the building in this area here. Uh, we'll reconfigure this portion of the car parking lot into trailer storage, and we will slide this driveway over and widen, widen it, uh, to accommodate two-way tractor trailers. Uh, this existing driveway will also be widened for the loading court to accommodate, um, two-way tractor trailer movements. We are also proposing new sidewalk along the entire frontage of the site um, and a new, um, fiber optic, uh, cable for township use. Uh, unfortunately, the, all the street trees along New England Avenue were in the way of the new sidewalk and fiber optics, so we are proposing to remove them and replace them with new street trees along the entire frontage. Um, we are replacing, um, all of the curbing between the two, uh, drive, reconfigured driveways in this area here. And we're going to widen this driveway, it's currently 22 feet wide. We're going to widen it 25 feet to meet, uh, township standards, and we will replace the curbing along the entire frontage of that portion of the driveway as well. Uh, we're slightly reconfiguring the, um, or not reconfiguring, but restriping and, and reconstructing a portion of this parking lot so that it meets ADA accessibility requirements. Uh, we'll have new sidewalk, new curbing. Um, same with the proposed parking along the west side of the building in this area here. Um, we'll be restriping that. We'll be putting in, uh, 11 new electric vehicle parking spaces in this area of the site. And, um, the total site improvements will include 55 new trailer spaces, 12 total loading docks, and 94 car parking spaces. Uh, the ordinance requires, um, 104 parking spaces, so we would ask for a variance for the number of car parking spaces. And there are two existing non-conforming, uh, variances that we would ask. One is the building setback. Um, the setback requirement is 80 feet. Um, and we would ask that the existing building, which is, uh, between 79.7 and 79.9 feet, uh, we would ask for that variance. And there's also two existing signs that are located 20 feet from the property line, or the right-of-way line, rather. Um, those two signs, one's in this area over here, and then one's just to the left of this driveway in this area over here. Um, variances for those two signs were previously approved, and we would ask that, um, they are reapproved with this application. Uh, stormwater management for the site, just real quick, um, we are proposing to reduce the overall, uh, impervious coverage for the site as well as the vehicular impervious coverage. Um, we are not proposing to train, change any of the overall drainage patterns for the site. So, we do meet the, the, uh, requirements at NJAC 7 colon 8. Um, we are reducing all of the runoff for the two-year, the 10-year, and the 100-year storm events coming off of the site.
Thank you, Tom, if we can move on to exhibit A3, which is the landscape plan?
Yes. Let me know when everybody can see it.
We can see it.
Okay. Uh, this is the landscape plan again, this, uh, plan is from the site plan set. This is drawing C0501, sheet 14 of 20. Um, same scale and rotation as the last exhibit. We are, um, as I mentioned, we're proposing new sidewalk and fiber optic cable um, within the right-of-way along the frontage of the site. We are proposing, um, new street trees along New England Avenue um, to replace the ones that we removed for the sidewalk and fiber optic cable. Um, this, the proposed sidewalk will be porous pavement, and that will allow the water to run and infiltrate into the ground and will promote the growth of the street trees. Um, it's not intended at all for stormwater management purposes. Um, in front of the new trailer parking area, we are proposing a, um, screen of a double row of evergreen trees. And between the evergreen trees and the street trees, we're proposing new ornamental trees. Um, the, the existing parking lot is located within the building setback line, um, the, the front, front yard setback, uh, which is an existing condition. Um, it's not permitted under the, uh, zoning ordinance, so we would ask for a, a waiver to allow this to remain. It's, I believe it's 32.6 feet. And we would also ask for waivers, um, we're, we're proposing new ornamental trees between the street trees and the parking lot, but we're not proposing, um, new screening. Um, we also currently don't meet the, the landscape area requirement um, or the number of deciduous trees required, um, within the parking area based on the, um, the area of the existing parking spaces. Um, so we would ask for those three waivers for this front parking lot. For the interior parking lots, we are also asking for a waiver. We're putting new landscape islands in with shrubs. Um, we're also taking out impervious coverage along the building and providing, it's about 13 feet of grass, uh, strip between the building and the, um, new concrete sidewalk. Um, we don't meet the deciduous tree requirement for interior parking lots. It's one tree per thousand square feet, so we would ask for a waiver um, for that, um, requirement, and the applicant will, um, pay a fee to the township's tree fund, um, in lieu of providing those additional trees. Um, on the backside of the building, we are replacing some of the existing landscaping just to clean up the back portion of the site. There's going to be two new ornamental trees, and then we're proposing, um, uh, ornamental grasses to separate the, um, loading court from the trailer parking, um, storage area. Around the office appendage in the building, there's, um, existing landscaping that's become overgrown. Um, we are proposing to remove all of that and replace it with new shrubs and then new landscaping, um, along the frontage of, of the building between the parking lot and the building itself. I think that's it for the landscape plan.
If we can go to your last exhibit, A4, Tom, the lighting plan?
Okay. And again, this is right from the site plan set. This is drawing C0601, sheet 16 of 20. Again, scale and orientation is the same as the last exhibit. Um, basically, we're going to reconfigure the existing lighting, um, to accommodate the reconfigured parking, trailer storage, and loading docks. Um, we're going to be, uh, removing all of the existing, uh, poles and, uh, light fixtures and putting in all brand-new poles and energy-efficient LED lighting. Um, we have identified one waiver that we are required. Uh, there are two existing lights, um, right on the property line in this area of this parking lot here. Um, those are shoebox lights, they currently spill into the adjoining property. This is a loading, um, court for the adjoining building, and I can go back to the aerial exhibit and show that area over there, but we would ask for a design waiver to allow, um, the spillage, um, onto that property. It'll be, it'll be less intrusive than it is currently today. These new fixtures will have arms, and they will have, um, uh, back shields to prevent as much spillage as possible, but, uh, due to the location right on the property line, it just, we, we just can't meet the ordinance requirement of 0.5-foot candles.
Thank you, Tom. Um, just for the benefit of the board and any members of the public, can you just summarize, uh, the three variances and the design waivers that we are requesting with this application?
Yes. Um, the variances are for car parking. We have 94 spaces where 104 are required. We have the building setback requirement, um, where we have 79.7 um, and 79.9 where 80 feet is required. And we have the, uh, two existing signs, um, 20 feet is provided where 50 feet is required. Uh, those are the variances. Um, the waivers include the minimum, um, off-street parking front yard setback. 80 feet is required, and we are pro- proposing 32.6 feet. Um, the maximum lighting at the property lines, um, we would ask to exceed the 0.5-foot candles permitted. Um, the minimum parking lot landscaping for front yards at 20%. We are proposed, there's 828 square feet proposed. We're proposing 430 square feet. Um, the minimum number of deciduous trees is one per 500 square feet of front yard parking area. Um, nine trees are required, and we have zero in this front existing parking lot. And the number of deciduous trees for, um, interior parking lots is one per 1,000 square feet of, um, is 10% of one per 1,000 square feet of parking area. Um, the required is, uh, 1,300, and, uh, I apologize.
I think you're buil- building a forest. I think it's, um, you need, uh, 12 trees.
12 trees where zero are required, thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Um, and the, and I, I believe that's all of the, uh, of the design waivers that we are requesting.
Thank you, Tom.
Uh, in addition to the, the, the flag, I think I did say the foot, uh, candles spilling over the property line for the lighting.
Thank you, Tom. That's all of Tom's testimony for this evening, so certainly we can open up to the public or members of the board for any additional questions.
Um, if you could unshare your screen, please?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you're muted. Does any members of the board have any questions of this witness? We'll open it up to the public, members of the public. If you have any, uh, questions of this witness, will you indicate by waving? Ms. Buckley, do you see anybody?
I was muted also, sorry, no one, Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public. Okay, um, you can call your next witness, sir.
Thank you, Kim Decken, are you available online and ready to testify?
Yes, I am.
Kim, can you just state your, uh, education, licenses, and experience?
I gotta swear in, Ms. Decker, can you please raise your right hand?
Yeah.
Do you swear that the testimony about to be will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, please state your name for the record.
Uh, Kim Decken.
Thank you.
And Kim, the, you know the drill, could you state your qualifications for the record, please?
I am principal of TK Studio. I am a registered architect, registered in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. Um, I have a bachelor's of architecture, have been working in the field for 20 years, and I have, um, appeared as an expert for multiple boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
She's acceptable.
Thank you. Kim, I know most of our improvements involve the parking lot and landscaping, but I think it's important for the board to understand the floor plan, the elevation and what some of these changes are going to do to the facade. So if we could start with what's going to be marked as exhibit A five, the conceptual floor plan?
Okay, can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so this is the building floor plan. It's oriented the same as the exhibits in that Tom presented. And so you can see this is the existing office area. This is our warehouse. This here are the existing loading positions that will remain and we are proposing to add six more on this side of the building sort of mirrored over the rear entrance.
We can move to exhibit A six, the conceptual elevations?
Visible?
Yes.
That is the showing of the Okay, can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is showing, this is the existing loading area, the existing rear entry, and these are the proposed loading docks on the opposite side. They're basically going to be duplicating these. They're just nine by ten instead of eight by ten.
If we can move to exhibit A seven, which is a rendering of the loading area.
Share them. Really strange. I have them open and it's not allowing me to grab them. Okay, here it is.
So this is exhibit A seven, a rendering of the, the new loading dock area. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the front office.
This is the front office. I don't know why it is not sharing the correct image.
We, we can just walk through this exhibit.
This is the front office area. And this is the proposed improvements for painting and cleaning up the entry with some efis to kind of give it a more current and updated street front. And now I can move to the next one. There we are. That's the correct one. This is an image of the proposed loading dock area. So all this is existing. We're just painting what's here and proposing a new loading area at the rear.
Thank you, Kim. I think that's Kim's testimony this evening. I don't know if there's any questions at this time?
Any questions of, from the board? Hearing no questions, members of the public. Do you have any questions of this person's testimonial?
No one, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Close to the public. You may proceed.
Thank you. Last but not least, we have Lance Landgraf. Lance, I see you online. Are you available to testify?
Yes, sir, I am.
Mr. Landgraf, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that it's a testimony about the giveaway to truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Lance Landgraf, junior.
Thank you.
And Lance, can you just state your professional qualifications for the record, please?
Sure. I have a degree from Bloomsburg University of Pennsylvania in urban regional planning. I've been licensed since nineteen ninety one. I also had my AICP certification since nineteen ninety five. Been in the planning field for thirty eight years. I think I'm the oldest person in, on this, on the, on our team tonight, Michael. So my age a little bit. I've been qualified mostly in Southern New Jersey. I do most of my practice down here. But I've also been qualified as an expert in front of the New Jersey State Superior Court on multiple occasions. I represent the city of Brigantine for the last twenty eight years as their planner. And I currently sit as the Director of Planning and Development at the CRDA, the Casino Reinvestment Development Authority in the city of Atlantic City.
Thank you. He's qualified to testify as an expert.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Lance. I, we've already had a lot of testimony from, from Tom about the site information and the existing conditions, but if you could just go over what we are requesting in terms of the requested relief and then the required proofs.
Sure, sure. I eliminated a lot of my stuff with Tom describing the site and going through the variances. So tonight I, I think we're looking at two different types of variances. One, a C one variance, which is the typical hardship type variance and then the C two, which is the, we used to call them flexible Cs or the purposes of zoning type variance. It somewhat matches a D one type qualifications for that criteria. The first variance, I think, is, is the hardship type variance, which is for the building setback at seventy nine point seven and seventy nine point nine feet where eighty feet is required. The building is, is there. It's quite a large structure over a hundred thousand square feet in area. Very difficult to move that building, even that three tenths of a, of a foot would be difficult to relocate. So we would ask for that to be considered a hardship type variance in, in this regard. The hardship deals with physical features on a property, sometimes topographic features, but in this case is a physical feature of the structure being located just a few, really less than an inch from the required front yard setback. I'll get to the negative criteria as I group these together after I touch base on the C two relief that we're asking for. Uh, I would also consider the, the signage variances, a C one hardship as well because they are existing. They, moving them back into the site would not serve the purpose of the property. And again, difficult to relocate. One, they would be pushed back into our parking area. And the other would most likely get moved into either a landscape area or the truck turning lanes being expanded into the rear of, of the building. So the C two type variance is where we, we believe that we promote one of the purposes of the municipal land use law, the purpose of the act. And that the benefits would substantially outweigh any detriment to the, to those, those purposes. And so for the positive criteria, I talked about the hardship for the, for the C one, the front yard setback. And the signage going into the flexible C, it has to relate to a specific piece of property. Well, we are a specific site. We have this building. We're trying to bring it up to current warehouse standards and meet the, the needs of what's been a growing need since COVID, honestly, for warehousing in, in the state of New Jersey. Our transportation corridors are, you know, very accessible throughout the entire state. So it helps that we have these warehouses located along those corridors. So also the fact that this site is located in a zone that permits this use, I think we're certainly talking at it about a, a specific location and a particular location. So getting into the purposes that I think we advance, I'm looking at section NJSA forty, call it fifty five D dash two and section two point A or two A, I'll say, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use for development of all lands in the state in a manner that will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. Well, one, refurbishing a vacant structure that is kind of dated, bringing it into modern warehouse use is something that certainly helps. First, the site be a viable piece of property and brings a, a, could be a problematic site, a vacant property to a viable permitted use in this zone. We think the, the general welfare is promoted by, again, bringing that house or house, excuse me, bringing that warehouse back to life again. We are also reducing the impervious coverage on the property and providing stormwater management on the site. We're reducing some of the, the paved areas and concrete areas. And we're reducing the, the, the runoff by decreasing the parking areas. The new plan is adding stormwater management, as I said, and that will improve the environment by providing that, that water control on the property. I think we're providing adequate air, air light and open space. The reduced parking, again, will allow the site to be better landscaped. We are adding significant landscaping to the property while not quite meeting the exact requirements of your ordinances and your, your design standards. We think we've done a good job at, at bringing the site back to life with new landscaping, providing new sidewalks, ADA accessibility to those parking areas. And in general, just an overall facelift, if you will, to the property. That was, that was section C two. Looking at section two G provides sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of residential, recreational and in our case, commercial and industrial uses. According to the respective environmental requirements and to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. Again, we are permitted use in the zone. So I think we are certainly providing sufficient space and appropriate location because we are permitted use. The proposed plan promotes the purposes of redevelopment, existing structure to meet the more modern warehouse needs. The site, as we've said, is, is permits the use. And the new warehouse facilities are more efficient with needs less staff than prior uses and therefore less parking. So that's the reduction in parking by ten spaces. We think we are parking it adequately for our use and adequately for the future use of warehouse in this region. Switching to the negative criteria, there's two prongs to that. We have to show that the granted requested variance will not cause of substantial detriment to the public good. And in that, again, the bulk variances that we're asking for are minimal in nature. The setback, as I talked about, is, is very de minimis, very minor, less than, less than an inch or so. Just about a little over an inch or so for the building. The signage exists where it is. We're asking to, to leave those signs in that same location. We don't think they are a detriment to any site triangles. The entrance ways to the parking area and the loading area are not blocked by any of these, these existing signs. And we want to retain that location of those signage. The positive benefits of allowing reduced parking as proposed substantially, as proposed substantially outweigh any potential detriment that might result from the granting of the bulk variance. Our client has a feel for the number of parking spaces that certain warehouse uses generate. And that's been successful for most of their properties, for almost all of their properties throughout their history of owning these warehouse type facilities. So we feel we have adequate parking for our use. Second prong is we must show that the granting of the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I have reviewed the township zoning and land development ordinances. And the project is consistent with promoting the purposes of the zone and plan, zone plan and ordinance. The purposes of the ordinance match those outlined in the MLUO that I've already gone over. Project also promotes many of the same purposes within your zoning ordinance. The project capitalizes and reestablishes an existing warehouse use, promotes redevelopment. Ensures existing industrial development and commercial base and balances preserved and is, and remains competitive. The project, project provides balanced vehicular circulation to avoid congestion from vehicular safety, promote vehicular, vehicular safety and provide ease access, where, where we're adding the, the second driveway and widening the existing driveways to provide better access to the site. It encourages development that produces tax surpluses, economic stability and job opportunities. These are all items that are in your, your purposes of your zoning and, and planning ordinance. Encourages efficiency of design, the new development and minimizes public service costs. So I think for all these reasons, the variances, and I would also say that the waivers are also met by the same the variance, the waiver criteria is also met by these same purposes. And that we can grant, the board can grant. I also represent for it, so forgive me for misspeaking. I'm, I'm not on your, your side of the, the table tonight. I'm on the other side. I apologize. That these variances and waivers can be granted for those reasons and the board should be comfortable with those reasons behind the granting of the variances. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Lance. If there's any questions for Lance about his planning testimony in support of the variances and design waivers at this time?
Members of the board, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. And members of the public. Do you have any questions of this witness or any of the witnesses that you've heard so far? Would you indicate so by raising your hand or waving your hand?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. Okay, members of the board, if you don't have any question of the witnesses that you've heard so far. Or if Mr. Floyd doesn't have, wanna, if he wants to sum up his, the testimony, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
We have no further testimony, Madam Chairwoman, so.
Okay, members of the board, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair, this is Dawn Corcoran. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application subject to the DNR report, CME report and the Division of Engineering and Planning.
Reverend Kenny, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Edjavaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
And thank you applicant team. You've been very cooperative.
Thank you.
Mr. Barlow, you, did you play, prepare anything?
No, no, I'll prepare a resolution for the next meeting and Mike will be in touch.
All right, reminder. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is April the ninth and our site planning meeting is March the twenty sixth.
We need an adjournment, Madam Chair.
We, I will make motion for an adjournment. That closes everything out. I want to tie it up before I put a string on. If not, I'll take a motion for an adjournment.
Madam Chair, this is Carol Saunders. I'm making motion for adjournment.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The button.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great week, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.